Okay, we're back. Okay, so our favorite agenda item, number twenty-one, calendar and work session review.
I was just gonna mention in terms of timing for this.
Okay.
I asked Paulson to go see with the executive session later.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. I'm fine if everyone else can accommodate that, I'm fine moving up the executive session.
We need to look at the agendas for next week and the next week, or you can all look at them.
But I don't think.
No, no, we could, we would come back and do that, but just.
It's gonna save room, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. You do, make it all with me, so it's just kind of like focalized, we did.
Okay.
Tim will.
Okay, I can, we'll do it soon.
Sorry.
So, 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 okay, so agenda number twenty-three, executive session.
I was just, well, I was just gonna, sorry, now we're spending more time talking about it. Can we do this in ten minutes and go back? Because I don't think the executive session, we don't have enough information to really go deep into the executive session. Sorry, nevermind, nevermind. So, I'm just thinking how long it would take, it might only take a couple of minutes, but. I mean, I, in all honesty, I don't think we were prepared to proceed with the executive session because three of the crucial staff members in our consulting who worked on this are not available to provide information input on that today. But there is somewhat of a decision that needs to be made, so I would, we go forward with it. I don't think it's gonna take as long as it would have been if these other folks were available.
So then, so you're, Chris, your hard stop is?
I just, I have to be, I have to pick up the dog before five, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that, yeah, yeah, no, we, we are people, we think that happens.
It's my child.
Uh, yeah. I mean, yeah, let's do the executive session and we'll do as quick as we can. Um, I, I, yeah, I had no idea what it, how long it would take, so, yeah, sorry to disrupt people's flow. So. Do you have that pulled up?
Yep. Uh, move to go into executive session for the following purposes. A, to consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E. And E, to hold a conference with the county attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B.
Okay, I'll second. And with that on the table, who do you want to invite in? County attorney, deputy county attorney, of course, commissioners, and county manager?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, as Chris mentioned, we don't have.
Yeah, yeah.
Other staff available, so this will be shorter.
Yeah, yeah, but, but those three in addition to the commissioners, great. So that, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we'll go ahead. You think this will leave quite crazy?
Thirty twenty. Okay, I think it will be.
It looked like.
No, you're fine. Oh, you know what? She was supposed to do this tonight, I was supposed to do it next time.
Okay. Okay. So we've come out of executive session. And. So do we need to vote on that or just state what the guidance is?
No, you can just state and then I'll certify.
Okay. And.
Notice.
Yeah, notice, decisions were made in executive session. But following on from that, the BSCC wishes to direct county attorney to contact the broker for the Lake Fork property for purposes discussed in the executive session.
Thank you. I'll certify the discussions during the executive session and where in relation to legal advice from the county attorney's seminar conference. I'll move to direct county attorney. To act on behalf of board as discussed in the executive session.
Okay, I'll second. Call for a vote on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. So we can come back to agenda item number twenty-one, calendar and work session review. Do you wanna lead us through first?
So looking at next week. So next week, uh, next Monday, you have the planning commission meeting. Your attendance is optional for those, but those aren't joint hearings. On the twenty-third.
Sorry, I just.
They're joint hearings.
They're joint hearings.
Yes, they're joint hearings.
Ideally, we would be there, let's be there.
Ideally, yes, yes, yes.
So, sorry, just kidding. Okay.
In the morning, you will have a work session on year-to-date budget presentations with the, the big six. Uh, so starting with the sheriff's office, he has the biggest budget, and then going to your statutory departments that also have the largest budget. So Public Works, Community Planning and Development, Public Health, Human Services, and PROS, not statutory, but large budget. In the afternoon, you'll be hearing from Lauren and I, where we will present the rest of the budgets, kind of in the role by categories. So Recreation and Culture, the remainder of Public Safety, those ones. That evening, we have the, the next feasibility study update. City Council did move the twenty-third one, so we can take that one off, see.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Is the community center five or five or six? Because I've been listening to six.
So at five o'clock, they're having just like a meeting.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
And ask questions, and then at six, when they're actually presented findings.
Yes.
So they have any five?
Just if anybody wants to go and ask them questions about the process, et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah.
Their skills, their.
And then you're going to presentation at six?
Yeah, yeah.
Did city council move that to a specific date yet, or?
I believe it is on the thirtieth.
Okay.
But I can find out tonight when you go to city council.
Okay. There's a Mount Massive Board meeting, Mount Massive Manor Board meeting at six, also.
Okay. Um, so I'd like the housing authority, AKA Mount Massive Manor, uh, board meeting. We should be able to pull that from the city's.
From the city, okay.
Yeah. Twenty-fourth, next Wednesday, with community coffee.
So, sorry, can I, on the twenty-third. Is, is the city, sorry, if I missed, you were saying this, the sales tax work session.
Will be moved.
Okay, okay.
So they, they deployed their survey on the sales tax. This be, be a text survey tied to voter registration. So that's going out, so they, they, they punted the July twenty-third, I believe, to the thirtieth.
Okay.
But we will double check on that, but we'll make sure.
You're talking, the city council? The sex, sales tax work, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna, whoops, um, so we're gonna review what's.
Okay, and that's their work, that's council's work session, not the task force.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, anyway, it's not happening on the twenty-third?
Yeah, excellent.
Whatever it is.
Yes.
Okay.
But we will, we will clarify it and get it on there. Twenty-fourth, community coffee at CMC, and then also at CMC later that morning is the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Government Lake County Focus Group. This is where they're gonna go over strategic plan, ways to, we can better engage with them, kinds of that, so.
Are we, can we, I mean, that is like basically an invitation for the county. Are we planning on having staff there? Okay, okay, great.
Yeah.
I cannot make that.
Okay.
I can't. But I give, you and I pretty scheduled that one.
Yeah, yeah. Next Thursday, the twenty-fifth, so we're reserving that morning work session for year-to-date budget presentations. So the idea is on the twenty-third, just to show you. So on the twenty-third, this is what you will receive from each department. So there will be updates on their long and short-term goals, any, you know, thing they've learned from this process, and then from any trend analysis they have. You'll also see summary charts with their, you know, actual rev, their actuals, revenues, expenses, their total budget, a chart on their revenues, a chart on their expenses. Um, this is just what the spreadsheet looks like if you're intrigued. But the spreadsheet will then populate the tables that go into the packet. So the idea is, so in the morning on the twenty-third, you will hear from, I guess, at the big six departments. In the afternoon, Lauren and I will go over big picture, everything else. Should you want to hear from a department on their budget, or where they're at, or if you have further questions that Lauren and myself and finance can't answer, then that's what we're reserving that morning work session for, is for any budget deep dives that you want to take outside of the big six.
On the twenty-fifth?
Yes, so that's what we're reserving it for, for that.
Okay. Okay.
Then also that morning is the senior advisory council, their quarterly meeting. Next Friday, just, you know, community awareness, stage race, starting. And that's throughout the weekend, those are the things of the weekend planned as well. Just so that you will have awareness in our calendar. Going farther out to the twenty-ninth, we have a Forest Health Council meeting.
We are waiting on more information. Uh, she thinks it's gonna be at CMC, but she said she would double check and get up with us so we can finish that off.
Okay, thank you. Thirtieth, we have a special meeting right before your work session.
You don't have to be going the thirty-first to the twelve o'clock.
Yeah. So you will, before you leave, you'll get your first CBO, CBOE hearing. So the assessor's office has said, since they're in their odd, odd year, this is why the CBOEs are now, Mark is projecting that there might be six total. And those will be on the, the thirtieth and the thirty-first. We're just having those as the placeholders for anyone who would protest on their own schedule. Also on the thirtieth for the work session, we will have the water updates, where Bryce has been at on his work for the OGG plan, augmentation plan in the enterprise. And then some discussion points on the IG that we have with the city of Aurora. Bring back the leadership policies and practices, and our, our regular meeting review going on. Just pull up the agenda for. Just so you see it, just for the twenty-third, so, Sheriff, Michael, Julia, Lauren, me, and then Anne. Um, and that gets us through. Thirtieth. We go to the thirty-first, community coffee, and then we'll have the reserve time for the CBOE again. But we can do it with two, until we, some more fun, I assume.
I can assure you, you won't be in my thoughts.
Yeah. All right.
We'll be sure to pre-prepare when we get back. Don't take that personally.
None taken, none taken. Uh, friends of Lake County will have their work party on the first. And Friday, the second, is a doomsday, the start of, start of the festivities.
Uh, will we be closed, um, Friday?
Um, that will be at your discretion, but generally in the past, folks have stayed open in the morning and done an early release. So it's what works best, but as they do the setup and stuff, county, county staff will be here, but you know, for your office. If you want to do the early release or.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. There we go, that gets us through the next couple of weeks, yeah. And yeah, if anything that we're missing or needs to be added, just let Liz and Sandra know, and we'll get those on the, the public planner. Oh, I don't know what this is. We're fine for this week. Anything else on those?
Nope, I don't, I didn't know anything else.
Okay. Move on to updates?
Yeah.
Okay, so in, in there, you'll see the, the link to the second quarter twenty-twenty-four department budget memos. Um, so those are updates from departments, and then these Safeway topics, I just kind of like pulled out some big ones to reiterate, or things I think that you are aware of. So you did give permission for CPD to apply for those planning capacity grants, so those were awarded. Um, so those will be for salaries for three years. So one would be for housing, and then the other would be for planner two, so that kind of higher level planner. The regional housing authority will have the debreasing measure on the November ballot again. I also did hear that the sanitation district will be going for that as well, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay, so just FYI for those.
So, uh, both of those will require an IGA for the election, so they both are aware of it.
Okay.
I'm just waiting for them to bring their.
Okay, great, thank you. So finally, I think you might have remembered, as the housing authority was trying to do the, the homebuyer preparedness classes, the COG offered them, we asked for them to be bilingual. They said they couldn't do it, anyway, Jackie wrangled around and found out the CHAFA can do it, so we're still gonna do the homebuyer classes, just not through our COG. They will be bilingual through CHAFA, so we'll still be offering those, what we, the housing authority will be offering those. Blood, blood, lead outreach was great at the elementary school, their ice cream social, sounds fun. So the landfill is continuing to explore the possibility of composting, so the commercial composting, so that, that work is progressing forward. There are still some challenges with CD-PHE, I know you guys are aware of them, for the Apen, for air permitting, pollution permits, air pollution permits. For like the burner up at the landfill, we, you know, three years ago, we received, or we, we bought a burner, so as people work on mitigation for their properties, instead of putting it in the landfill, we could burn it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Why do they limit loads of, of slash to like one, one load per day?
Um, that is because of the, the amount of space that takes in the landfill, so trying to, the less landfill space we have, then we need to open the next cell sooner. So that was part of the strategy, was buying the, the air burner, so we could take basically everybody slash, and then we could just, we could burn it all, and that does triple whatever it is, can go in the landfill and take up a lot less space. But that's the rationale behind it.
Is it, is it, sorry, go ahead.
I think too, the, the, the problem, we had like acres of slash that we couldn't keep up with the burning to follow the regulations of the state. We could only burn like a five by eight portion of it, and then we had to put it out every night, and we couldn't keep it burn, yeah, it's, it's crazy. So like, if we collect, we collected too much, if we collect too much, we can't keep up and get rid of it, and we just have to put it in the face.
Because it, yeah, because it, I mean, like me, right, I'm cutting down a bunch of trees, and I got a slash, but then I gotta go every day.
Right. Daily trip, yes. Um, so there are, we do, you know, N O C four, just worked on chipping. I think, I don't know that people actually have access to drop off for Arwick to use their chipper, might probably not, no. But that, that's the rationale behind it, is just there, there's so much that we can't keep up, and then it just continues to fill up the landfill, or that, or. Because when you put the slash in, it takes up so much space, and then when the compactor goes over, like it doesn't free up as much space, so like, if you go, and you go, and you go, and we all go, like that day with that, it, it just creates a, a burden up there.
Do we have a county that will ship them?
We do, but Arwick is using it for.
That's CMC's.
Oh, that's CMC's, okay, no, we do not.
I don't think we do.
Well, maybe we should get one.
We have discussed that in the past, and thought about that, the, no, it's, I think it's cost prohibitive, but like it is maintenance prohibitive. They break down all of the time, we only have one mechanic on staff. So it has been a consideration in the past of what we can do.
The air burner was really, went to like, yeah, solution, because the other thing which we were, I was thinking about as we were doing the work along County Route seventeen, with chipping all of it, and like reseeding everything, I was like, okay, I'll have to talk to management board about, like, maybe fire department goes out to attack regeneration out there, because who knows what it's gonna look like if we are chipping it and throwing, and spreading it rather than like removing it entirely, so that'll be interesting.
Yeah. And we've, we've, there are other issues with CD-PHE at the landfill, just like stalling like permitting processes, and like getting answers from the state. Was on a call last week with Eagle County managers, they're also experiencing same frustrations, but there's our, um, more around wastewater. They can't turn some things they have to do, but they're just not getting anything from the state. And that's where the challenge, so last year, we had the executive director of CD-PHE came for a work session with the board, with her executive team, to express some of these things to her, and that. We need, we need a lot of these things to move forward, she was like, so for example, the crusher, crusher is ready, they're gonna start crushing this fall, getting ready for next year, all of that. That thankfully is under like a long-term Apen, but like if it wasn't, we couldn't crush.
For years.
For years, for years, to delay it, and that's where we're sitting with the air burner, so it's asking you guys to, as well, again, elevate, as you discussed with CD-PHE, if you do a counter jail, to remind her we need things, and I can get more specific things for you.
Can you give us a script?
Yes, yes, happy to. I can discuss that.
Yeah, because of, I mean, if you're trying to mitigate the wildfires and all this, then we have to have an infrastructure to dispose of. And then you have the slash in the wood that we're, we're trying to, so the place doesn't burn down.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So I mean, yes, I can get you guys a script, I can, we can also draft a letter from the board to CD-PHE, like other ways to just try and like really emphasize that we support the state and some of the things they want to do, but we also need like the permit done.
Okay, sorry.
Yes. Speaking of other persistent issues, we continue to have issues with Tyler from HR, the assessor's office, and finance. It's just not working, and like every, everything we have tried, from trainings, from everything, is just as, it's not beneficial. So the, the contract with Tyler does go through twenty-five, we are exploring options, initial phases of options now, what a, a switch would be. When we implemented Tyler, which has assessor functions, treasurer functions, finance and HR functions, that was done during COVID, so imagine how well that went. But since then, Tyler doesn't have the best customer service, they continue to refer us to like power users. The Garfield County Assessor is a power user, and like, I'm really tired of Mark asking these things, as he works through a lot of processes, and then Tyler doesn't do them correctly, or it doesn't make changes that other sufferers do that are normal assessor office procedures. But that's like a frustration with Tyler, where they're like, oh, you should talk to Chaffee County, I'm like, cool, they don't work for me, you do. So please help me with that, so it's been, it's been a very difficult contract to manage. We do have onsite training coming from the credit we received from the failed stuff they tried to do for community planning and development, but I'm just like planning to see now that there might be a large technology change in the future. So, yes.
One more.
Yes, another thing just that, which more for just like.
We're, we're, we're gonna start that in January.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah. So you may or may not be aware, but there at the Kitty Corral, which is a county park, there's the mural on it that says do something awesome on it. Community members have decided to, they wanted to repaint it, they just now contacted us, or we, well, we contacted them. So they're probably gonna move forward with the painting of the mural, I don't particularly care about that. However, what I do care about is that as sanitation continues to work on their master plan, and updating all of the pipes, I guess I can just show you on a map would be easier. So. There we go.
Right in the middle.
Okay.
On the corner.
Right here, yes. All right. Here we are, Kitty Corral. So you can't really tell that these lines go away. All of these houses on this block, their property line goes into the alleyway, and there is no easement with the sanitation district. So the sewer main runs under here. Um, I believe it's still the old, I don't know if it's clay pipes or the wood pipes still, maybe, they're old, they, they need to be updated. Yeah. So, so here's the restroom at the Kitty Corral, right, right, kind of where we connect into it. So the proposal from the sanitation district and JVA, to be able to remedy all of this, is to, they're gonna have to go in through here. Basically, they're going to have to cut through the Kitty Corral to connect to the Poplar Street main, which we've had initial discussions with them, with Public Works, Community Planning and Development, with JVA, which is the sanitation's engineers, you know, they have, they have a great thought-out plan, all of that. They'll pay the county, you know, and put the part back, you know, the way, the way it was, or any improvements. So probably next summer at some point, Kitty Corral is gonna be closed, and they're gonna cut through all of this, so whatever they paint on their mural.
It's gonna go away.
It's gonna go through the retaining wall. Yes, which we've explained, so the folks who want to do this, they're aware, just letting you know that.
Are they cutting the, like a section of the wall, or are they getting rid of the wall?
Whole, they're, they're ripping, they're, I, I cannot remember from that.
Because we need the wall with all that.
We do need the wall, yes, but so that's why, yeah, so this, this whole thing will be closed, I think it's gonna be ripping out, maybe not the entire retaining wall, but it's definitely gonna be a big chunk of it, and all of that. So, so, whoops, there, you can see where the property line is going, uh, into, into the alleyway, um.
So the mural is gonna have to be repainted.
Yes, and they.
I can chat with them.
They're like too far down their path now to like cancel, is what they said, and I was like, why didn't you reach out to anyone, maybe, um, about repainting?
I'll chat with a couple of them, see.
Yeah, so.
Because I didn't really know that that was happening until like a few days ago either, and I was like, oh.
Me either, until, yeah, and then. Me either, until, yeah, and then, so, Pro's reached out today, I owe someone a call back, so it's, I mean, sure, they can move forward with the painting, but it's kind of be ripped out and re-put in next year, so they can.
Well, they can change the, they can change the uh the theme.
Right.
The motif of the mural.
Yeah, yeah.
And keep it fresh.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so anyway, just another item of when it comes up, um.
But the the, it's not county staff or money that's doing it, right?
No, no, it's, yeah, so it's not a bad, it's just, yeah, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, just a, another one for you to be aware of, just a, may may or may not know, so the state last year passed legislation banning uh firearms in public facilities. You know, with local governments having to opt out to do that, so a lot of your um colleagues across the aisle in their counties are doing resolutions to opt out of that, so you can have firearms within the public building, we do ban them here, um. To where we don't have a great way of like enforcing that currently, however, you know, we do ban them here, but I just will let you know that that's what other counties are doing. Um. Other changes, so uh we're gonna switch where the opioid abatement funding goes, so instead of going to DHS, it's gonna go to Public Health, um they're gonna continue working on um uh harm reduction strategies, um so they are working with um. Working on getting a collector piask, um from the Colorado Household Sharps Takeback Programs, that would be something that would live like on the outside of that building there. So for folks who don't have a way um to properly dispose of their sharps, they can do so.
They can have a city hall.
Oh, they do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's one at City Hall, um and then um, you know, they can have, they will have one at Public Health as well, just so it's there, be upfront, you know, be anonymous, folks can do that, um. So, um.
Just make sure you get chain-dial gloves or whatever has to do with it.
Yeah, little bit, monthly, it's part of the.
I think it's part of the. The contract, so you P H E would cover the, yeah, that's part of the program.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then they are still uh running the the Bimonthly Harm Reduction Coalition, um so those um run through Public Health, and then that, uh they come up, their mobile unit comes up um bimonthly, and use up libraries, depending on their location. Hope you get that, um. Yeah, and so we've re-upped the engagement now with Public Health, uh taking, uh receiving that funding, so now Julia, Julie, um back engaged with Region Five opioid settlement. Um, other quick updates, so I think the the Chamber of Commerce is maybe sort of kind of resurrecting, Nancy Bailey is the new uh Director of that, um so might might see a better uh voice for businesses in Lake County, hopefully, um Lead Bill Twin Lakes has launched their new website, if you haven't seen it, check it out, see if you see Hal on there, and more other people, you might be on there too.
Yeah.
Um, Adam's been working closely with uh Twin Lakes Business, you know, Interlocken did have an impact on their businesses, but trying to help them with pushing out, like fires out, also be smart, don't start another one, but yes, we're open, please, please come and spend your dollars. Um, any other questions or anything that I can address for you or answer for you, or any of us can?
Just good, the Inlocken, that reminded me of something I had forgotten to mention closer to the fire wrapping up, was whether we want, or or I think it would be great to like write a letter or letters to the state and the feds, just thanking them, I think especially the state, I understand, we've um kind of bent over backwards to be very flexible on getting resources quickly to us, um in a way they didn't necessarily have to.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay.
That would be great, and and I mean, that was a great version, so.
I think that wraps this up, do you have any, any questions?
That's good.
Okay.
And then we've got their consent, they, thank you, so, um. We've got the consent agenda, so.
I couldn't find the May twenty-third minutes, I know I've seen them once, and I'm gonna find it again, so I'm sorry, but there were all the other minutes.
I.
Um, did you see that, see?
I did.
Oh, okay, great, cool.
And I, I didn't have any substantive comments, I mean, there's the usual sort of like tiny little typos here and there, but yeah, it's like.
Un-unfortunately, they're not my minutes, but they're pretty straightforward, they're just like, here's what you talked about, and just, uh, bullshit, and moved on.
You don't know, I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, the, this is good, I I meant that, I I've never written a single thing without a.
I I do.
Typo in it, even the third time I've read it, it boggles my mind how you can have like checked something so carefully, and then still find another typo hiding in it, so that was not a criticism, it's just, what I meant was, nothing substantive.
Read through the typos, but, yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, there were, you know, I had one like, uh instead of hardware, it was like, it just didn't have an E on it or something, so I don't have any bigger changes other than um a typo there either. Uh, and now I'm trying to find. Oh, and maybe on, sorry, on uh January sixteenth, um Tracy, I don't know how you, well, I should know, but I think on, like item eight was moved to discuss at second, but when it, and it goes one, eight, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then it says see above, can we just put like, discuss as item, a second item or something like that? Or or do you think that makes sense, is that how you're writing them, see above?
Um. Yeah, I guess, I I have no preference on that, I mean, I just, because you did change the order, I don't, do you want me to just take the second eight out?
I guess so, sure, sure, I just didn't think just leaving it at see above was necessarily good.
Okay. Just in case somebody did not pay attention.
Yeah, I don't, that's that's fine, or maybe leave it, I don't know, I'm sorry, I just wanted to think.
I don't, I don't know what the proper.
Just leave it, just leave it, just.
Okay.
Um. I'm sorry, I was just gonna do the one. Oh, I think on the first item on January ninth, it was just a a typo hard hard, it should be to upgrade hardware, and instead of an E at the end, there was a D.
Okay.
That is all. Um. So with that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Great, thanks, uh Colfula?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh consent agenda is approved, with those minor remarks, and we are done with our agenda for today at four oh seven, oh M.
Sure thing.